Good evening. Let me just start off by thanking all of you for coming. And let you know the reason why we're starting exactly at 6:30 and we'll be ending exactly at 8:30, two very fast hours, I promise you, is because we are on live television. We're a Lolo, maybe some of you know that, having watched your other town halls. But we also record these meetings as well, because it's part of our follow-up. So again, welcome, we've been looking forward to this meeting. We changed the venue, we wanted to make sure we could accommodate as many people as possible. You know, this district is something that's top of mind almost every day with our team. So for those of you who don't know me, my name is Rick Blangiardi, and I'm not being facetious. I feel like I should do this. You'd be surprised how many places I go, and people say, "Who are you?", that kind of thing. So I never want to, I'm true, I never want to take that for granted. But I have the privilege of serving as the 15th Mayor of the City and County Honolulu. In a few moments tonight, you're going to meet an extraordinary assemblage of men and women here. This is our team, it's our cabinet team. And they're here tonight to not only get sensitive, I want everybody on our team to be aware across the island of all the issues. So even if some of the people don't get asked a question, it's a learning journey for us. We did 11 last year, this is our fifth one this year, and they've been very educational. So that's what we're here to do, but more than anything, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, they've become a point of contact for you. So your questions tonight can be answered directly by those people best in the know. And at the same time, if we can't exactly do it from the microphone, we certainly will be here for about a half an hour afterwards, and you'll have personal contact and follow-up. We want this to be two meaningful hours for you, and we really appreciate the time you're giving us tonight. So we'd like to start this off with a pule, and I'm looking for Kahu Farden, but I don't see him here. Kahu, here he is, I'm sorry, sir, yes, thank you. I usually see you in your robes.
Yeah, please excuse me, I decided to wear my clothes clothes. I was with him last week. It's been, it's an honor to have been asked again to share with you all a pule, a prayer. My name is Hailema Farden, I'm the Kahu of Waikiki and I Protestant Church. I drove all the way from Waikiki to be with you, I'm kidding. I live in Makiki here. And tonight I'm pinch hitting for Kahu Kenneth Makoukane, who offers his aloha. And he's unable to be here, so I said, "Sure, I did it last year, I'm happy to come again this year and be with you all." I'll reserve a question for the band master after, is that okay? I'm kidding, I told him I'd do that. Where are you? Anyway, enjoy with me in prayer. Eho malukaku. Ikeli kamakula nikike lo'oko ke'au holo'oko. Ei iaho'e makou kaupoe'ohani'akoko me'ne. Wako'ko me'ne makou no'ka ke'kuka'aku kama'ilio'ana. Me'ko makou mea, Rick Blangiardi, amekana mau'alaka'i akoko me'ne kapoe'ana'ina ke'kaya'ulu. Ke'ku'a kenoe'akune'ia'oe, opomaika'i ke'iha'apapahana'ne. Eh, ha'avi ka'ika'ika'kana'au'au. Me'ko makou mea, amekana mau'alaka'i ke'ku'a. Ha'avi aku'ialako ka'ika'kana'au'au. Eho'okoe'ina'ana lice'ole alako'e'ua'mo'ne, no'ko makou pono'ne. No'ala'ila'ke'ku'a apau kamaku'apapahana'ki'iahi'ahi. Eho'eho'iia'ea makou ko'mako'ua'hi'ko pono. Ke'pule'nei makou'ia'oe ke'iha'amanau. Ma'o'oesu kristula'ako makou ho'ola. Ame'ne, ame'ne, ame'ne. Aloha, aloha.
Kahu, thank you so much, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I want to do a couple of quick introductions. I know Councilwoman Radiant Cordero is here, Councilwoman. Is, and I think Councilman Tyler Dos Santos Tam. Carlos, did I say Carlos? Tyler Dos Santos Tam, I can't believe I said it. Tyler, is Tyler here? Not yet, he will be here. Is he here, he's outside? The grand entrance, and in he walks, Tyler Dos Santos Tam. Perfect timing. Radiant, is there anything you'd like to say? Come on up. Tyler, I called you Carlos again. I, I, I have this thing, it's unbelievable.
Thank you, Mayor, mahalo, Mayor. Aloha, everyone, my name is Radiant Cordero, I get to serve on the Honolulu City Council. And it's such, it's such an honor to be able to have this conversation that we're having tonight. Last year, we had it in Kalihii, and it was awesome, and now we're getting to have it again. As you can see, we needed a bigger space, and so I can't wait to continue this conversation. At the council level, we're taking up our city budget. The mayor introduced the budget in the beginning of March, and we've seen a lot of the priorities from our communities introduced by your council members. And we're going to continue to hear it through these meetings, and we're so excited to just continue these conversations once again. And a lot of the things that have been highlighted have been our parks and public safety, which the mayor and his administration have highlighted from last year's meetings. And so myself and my colleague, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam, are here to also listen, and also if you want to speak with us, we are, once again, we are here for you all. I also want to give a shout-out to my neighbors from Kalihii Valley, we have from Kapalama and from Kalihii as well. So I want to just thank them for being here, and I appreciate you all. And, okay, Tyler?
Well, I couldn't have said it any better than my colleague here, Radiant Cordero. I want to thank the mayor and his entire team who's here. As you mentioned, the city council's going through the budget process. I'm not on the budget committee, so Councilmember Cordero can answer all of those questions. But I am eager and excited to be working on all of the other issues too. I represent from Ward Avenue, so we're right on the outside of my district, all the way to Kapalama Canal and Middle Street, so it's Kaka'ako to Kalihii. I've got all of the kind of neighborhood surrounding downtown in Chinatown and Nuituanu, Pa'oa, Leleha. And it's, this is a really diverse neighborhood, a set of neighborhoods with a lot of different issues that we face, and I'm looking forward to working on these with the mayor and his team, whether it's on crime, whether it's on housing, whether it's on our parks, transportation, all kinds of things that are coming down the pipeline. And if there are issues that we can help with, please feel free to let me and my staff know.
Thank you, Tyler, thank you. All right, I was told that we're going to have some state senators and reps come tonight, but I don't see any of them in the room. Is somebody here that I missed? I don't think so. One other introduction we want to make, one of the things that we did when we first came into office is we made a decision that, part and parcel to all the things we're doing, we wanted to do something that would allow us to invest in our youth and give them some exposure and experience, so we set up a youth commission. We've had it now in place for more than a couple of years, we've had some extraordinary young men and women come through. One of them is here with us tonight. I always like to give them two minutes, it's a good development opportunity for them, to get up here, tell them a little bit about yourself. So Diego, come on up, and the microphone's yours.
All right, so my name is Diego, I am a Honolulu Youth Commissioner. Just really brief on what that is, it's a commission of youth that we're appointed to advise the mayor and city council on youth-related issues. I graduated La Luhua, so I'm a ways from home, but right now I'm working at the state legislature, and hopefully sometime this week I'll fill out my forms to commit to UH. But I'm very thankful to be here in this space with you guys and to listen. I unfortunately do not see a lot of youth in the crowd. I know it's hard, but I really do encourage you, bring them, I'm a big advocate that for a community to be strong, it needs to be built from the community up. And one of the, one of the things that that means is to involve our youth in the community. So whether that be civically, or whether that just be, in any way that they can, anything helps, and it helps them make choices later on in life that help perpetuate the welfare of the land and the people in that community. So thank you so much for allowing me this time, and I look forward to hearing from you guys.
Thanks, Diego. Diego Carranza, Diego Carranza. And you know, I agree that tonight we don't have, but in our other town halls and other places, we've had a lot of young people come, and it's always very exciting to see that. That said, I really am anxious for you to meet the people behind me, so I'm going to start off, we'll start off with you, and we're just going to work it around, and here we go.
Aloha mai kakou, my name is Ka'ili Trask O'Connell, and I'm the Executive Director of Moka, which is the mayor's Office of Culture and the Arts. Thank you so much for having us here tonight.
Hi, everyone, I'm Kim Hashuro, I'm the Director for the Department of Customer Services. We provide services at DMVs, satellite city halls, and public communication, and thank you for coming tonight.
Aloha, everyone, my name is Sam Moku, the Homeless Coordinator for the mayor's office. Glad to be here, aloha.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Roger Babcock, I'm the Director of the Department of Environmental Services. We take care of sewage and rubbish.
Good evening, my name is Ben Sullivan, I'm the Deputy Director for the Office of Climate Change, Sustainability, and Resiliency. Happy to be here tonight, thank you.
Aloha, my name's Andy Sugg, and I'm the mayor's Chief of Staff. It's great to see some familiar faces in the crowd, and mahalo for having us, thank you.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Krishna Jaram, I'm the Deputy Managing Director here at the City and County. Thank you all for being here.
Good evening, my name is Mike Formby, and I'm the Managing Director. Thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening, my name is Hiro Toya, I'm the Director for the Department of Emergency Management. We deal with disasters.
Hello, hi, everyone, I'm Kevin O'Shea, I'm the Deputy Director of the Office of Housing, and thank you for allowing us to share this time with you tonight.
Good evening, my name's Anton Krucki, I'm the Director of the Department of Community Services. So we do all the human services for the city and county. We have the Work Hawaii Division for Training, we have Elderly Affairs, we do all the HUD money that comes in, all the public housing, and all the GIA grants. We also house homelessness, the coordinator, and also childcare coordinator in our department. Thank you for coming tonight.
Aloha, everyone, I'm Carrie Castle, I'm with Budget and Fiscal Services Department, and we are responsible, and we are responsible for both Treasury and Real Property Taxes, those are a couple of our key divisions. Thank you for coming tonight.
Aloha, everyone, my name is Lloyd Yoninaka, I am the Executive Secretary for the Neighborhood Commission, and we manage all of the neighborhood boards. I know we have at least half a dozen neighborhood board members, can you raise your hand? All right, can I give them a hand? Thank you. Thank you to the board members for being on the board and dedicating your time for your community, and thank you all for being here.
Aloha, I'm Roger Morton, I'm the Director of the Department of Transportation Services. We operate skyline, we operate the bus, the handy van, we do the complete streets, we do bikeways, we do traffic signals, all things transportation. Happy to be here.
Hi, good evening, Ian Santi, Deputy Director, Emergency Services Department, ambulances, lifeguards, the city health services, and core. Thank you for being here tonight.
Excuse me, Clark, what are you doing over here? There's a very famous guy right here.
Aloha. My name, my name is Clark Bright, I'm the Bandmaster of the Royal Hawaiian Band. So proud and honored to do what we do, serving the community through music and the arts. Thank you for coming tonight, mahalo.
Hundred-and-eighty-year legacy. We're so proud of our band, and so proud of Clark. I don't know if you realize this, but that band plays 350 times a year, almost every day at all kinds of venues. It's really a tremendous, tremendous touch to our city. It's really great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Erwin Koata, I'm the Deputy Manager at the Board of Water Supply, thank you for having us.
How's it? My name is Haku Millis, I'm the Director for the Department of Design and Construction. We execute the city's capital improvement program for various agencies and departments. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, I'm Reed Yoshida, the Assistant Chief in the Honolulu Fire Department, and it is an absolute pleasure to be here tonight.
Aloha, good evening, my name is Matt Gonzer, and along with Ben, who introduced himself earlier, we served in the mayor's Office of Climate Change, Sustainability, and Resiliency, helping to coordinate actions and policies with all of the departments to make sure that we're not contributing more to climate change, but also preparing our communities for a more
Aloha, everyone, my name is Jordana, I'm the Early Childhood Resource Coordinator. My kaliana is to our littlest, littlest keiki, their ohana, and the professionals that provide care to them. Thank you so much for being here, happy to be here.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Bugs Baguio, I'm the Assistant Director of Human Resources. I know Diego mentions not a lot of young people here, but if, I'm sure you have children or grandchildren, if you're looking for a summer job for them, please see Darcy at the back, or Laura Thielen, our Parks Director. And if you want any other job, we're open, so come talk to us, thank you.
Can I, can I embellish that for a second though? Because this summer, since COVID, the last couple of summers, our Summer Fund Program has been able to grow. This year, we've set an ambitious goal of having 10,000 kids, but we need 500. And maybe Laura, you can embellish this when it comes to you, people, as well as some juniors. It's a great job, it's an eight-week program, it pays well, let Laura talk about it, but we're dead serious about this, so if you get your wheels turning. Last year, the reason why we didn't get to the number we wanted to is we didn't have enough councils. So in order to handle the numbers we want to, we need those councils, it's really important.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Ryan Nishibun, I'm an Assistant Chief at the Honolulu Police Department. I cover the Central Patrol Bureau, which is basically Kalihii all the way out to Makapu. Thank you.
Aloha, everyone, my name is Laura Thielen, I'm the Director for the City and County Department of Parks and Recreation. And as Mayor said, we are looking for summer fund people. Our starting salary is $16 an hour, and it goes up to $19 an hour. So if you have children, grandchildren, nieces or nephews that are littered around your house over the summer, and you want to get them active, they can come and work from morning to the mid-afternoon within a group environment with a bunch of other people, and they can be outdoors in a park, and there's not much better than that. So please come see me afterwards, or see our Public Information Officer, Nate Sorota, there. We are looking for more people so we can serve more of the keiki on our island.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Kat Tashner, I am the Director for the Department of Land Management, so we protect, develop, and manage the city's real property. Thank you.
Hi, aloha, everyone, I'm Rick Keane, I'm the Deputy Director at Hart. Hart's responsible for the construction of the rail project.
Aloha, my name is Amy Asselby, I'm with the Office of Economic Revitalization. There's a couple of my team members right back there, and if you own a small business or are interested in starting a small business, they are the folks who can help you, so please stop by. Thank you for coming.
Aloha, everybody, I'm Dawn Apuna, Director of the Department of Planning and Permitting, or DPP, I thank you for coming out this evening.
Aloha, and good evening, everyone, my name is Denise Sisari Matzubara, I'm the Executive Director for the Office of Housing. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of your evening.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Dita Hollyfield, I'm Director of Enterprise Services. Thank you for enjoying my hale tonight. I am the Director of the Blaiso Campus, the Waikiki Shell, the six municipal golf courses, and our very most favorite, the Honolulu Zoo.
Aloha, my name is Stephen Courtney, Deputy Director for the Information Technology. We're made up of about 160 talented IT professionals that provide IT services to all these departments, but also to the public, we provide applications such as hnl.info, where you can give reports about traffic or weather alerts, and also provide applications like hnl311, where you can report issues to the city. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, Jean Albano, Director and Chief Engineer of the Department of Facility Maintenance. Our department is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the city-owned streets, streams, infrastructure, buildings, streetlights, and the like. So if you do have any concerns with any of those systems, please give me a shout after this evening, and look forward to our dialogue. Thank you very much for having us tonight.
Aloha mai kakou, Ernie Lau, Port of Water Supply, glad to be of service to all of you.
Thank you, Ernie. So once again, I want to thank all of you for coming, and thank you for also catching the fact that we did change the venue, I'm so glad that we did, we're off to a good start, because the venue that we were going to use would not have housed as many people. So this is great that you're all here. So I'll tell you how we like to do this here, so this is going to come in the form of requests, if you will. First of all, we're not here to make any speeches, okay? We're here to answer questions, and we want to answer as many questions as we can. And Jean, I think you're going to be hearing before, after, tonight, that, yeah, 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 not afterwards, I'm sure, so stay awake back there, be ready. All right, and so, so just a couple of things about that. One, I don't want to be rude to anybody, but in the spirit of not making speeches, I'm going to ask you, when you come up here to get to your question, maybe you need to do a little bit of explanation, but if I think you're getting a little too long with it, I'm going to say, "What's the question?" Fair enough? Because we want to cover as much ground as possible, and we know in a crowd of this size, there are a lot of different issues. And you'll be surprised how fast the two hours will go by. Secondly, I'm going to ask you to keep it civil. We will be civil. I understand that there's passion there, we love that. I know just at the Neighborhood Board meeting, Neighborhood Board people there, and that they're used to that, we like that, that's what we want. This is our city, the reason why we're here tonight, it's about that. So you know, the other thing I would tell you is, you can ask us anything, we don't filter the questions, okay? The only thing I'm going to tell you in advance is, we may not necessarily tell you what you want to hear, okay? And I mean that, I mean, we're not here to pander to anybody, we're here to tell you to the best of our ability the truth. Now, we're interested in problem-solving, so don't take that the wrong way, but you know, sometimes, you know, people don't want to hear what we have to say, but we're going to try to give it to you as straight as possible, so you know where things stand, to the best of our ability, okay? All right, so the other, last thing, no need to form a line. I know that this young lady's sitting right here, but you can come up one at a time, we will get to you, you can raise your, we will get to you, and as I said earlier, a lot of us will stay around tonight afterwards as well. I know that one person's already written something, they don't want to come up to the microphone, but come up one at a time, ask your question, if I can answer it, or if it's directed at me, I will try to do the best to my ability. Certainly that's why all these men and women are here tonight, okay? So with that, who wants to go first? Let's get it going, come on up.
Hi, good evening, everyone, my name is Amanda Yabonis.
Yeah, that's what I forgot to say, please tell us your name, okay?
Amanda Yabonis, I'm the Chairwoman for District Number 15, Kalihii Palama. So I have a couple of different things. Number one, Kapalama Canal, if that can be dredged out, it's really full, and I'm kind of scared for the rains that just happened, looked like it was going to overflow, if that can be done soon. I had a neighbor that did call it in, and nothing has happened within a few months, so if we can please get to that. Number two, Lahaina fires. I know that there, according to the Army Garrison, I spoke to two days ago, Commander, he said that Honolulu, Oahu doesn't have a wildfire crew to address if there's any wildfires. They did assist in Mililani, Mililani Moka, when there was a fire just recently to help that out.
They did a little bit more than assist, but we'll talk about that.
Yeah, so if we can have a special crew that is specially trained for wildfires for Oahu, that would be great.
All right, two questions, most, I really should have said one question at a time.
Sorry.
But since you're the Chair of the Neighborhood Board, you got two, okay?
I'm special, I know.
All right, so Jean, turns out you're up first, baby, okay?
You hit the nail on the head, Mayor, on me being called up first. Anyways, with regards to the dredging of Kapalama Canal, I believe that becomes potentially a capital improvement project. Our department is primarily the department that maintains and cleans its stream. Now, if it's requiring a major cleanup, which it sounds like what the community wants, we'll discuss it internally. Haku, is that something that you're involved with as well? I'm sorry.
It's all against, Haku, what you do.
Yes, thank you, Jean, thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm Haku Millis, I'm the Director for Department of Design and Construction, and I said capital improvement program. What that really means is we do the bigger design and construction projects for various departments, and that includes DFM. So DFM, as Jean mentioned, does maintenance for streams and canals. When it turns into a larger project like this is, we, we would take it over and it becomes a capital improvement project. So Kapalama Canal is slated right now for dredging. The details of the project have escaped my mind, but I can get you those. It is in planning and design right now. The schedule, again, I don't have at the top of my head, but I will get your information, I'll get you that info.
We will follow up that, I want to let everybody know, we will follow up, we take a lot of pride in that, so we'll get that contact. So I think you want to hand it over to Chief, he's going to talk about wildfires?
Oh.
Okay? Anything else, Haku, I don't want to cut you short, anything else you want to say about that?
No.
All right, okay.
Yeah, good evening, my name is Reed Yoshida again, and thank you for that question. So you know, just to put you folks at ease, on the Mililani Moka fire, we brought in a ton of resources, and we did a huge collaboration with the military, as well as working with other city departments. The Honolulu Fire Department does have a very good staffing plan. In the event that we see a wildland fire that could progress, we also have a lot of agreements in place with other city, state, and federal resources, fire departments, that we can bring in their staffing, as well as their fire engines, to help us bring in enough resources to address the fire. We also have incident management team, if we need to, that would call in a resource team, such as, as you were speaking about, that could assist us. But the Honolulu Fire Department is heavily trained in wildland fire, and we have resources, external resources at all government levels to assist us.
Thank you, Chief. If I could just give a little bit, little bit more on that, because I'm really proud of what the Fire Department did in conjunction with the military during that fire. Again, that fire occurred after Lahaina, and was, you know, an acute awareness, even though it was up in the hills, and it was in green, green territory, nonetheless, it was aggressive. So our helicopters, the two that the city owns, I think we're getting a new one, basically can drop about 100 gallons each, right?
Yes, we're getting a new twin-engine helicopter.
We're getting a new twin-engine helicopter, so we, but we had, around the clock, we had, no, around the clock, but quite extensively, we had seven military helicopters, Chinooks and Blackhawks, that were dropping 2,000 gallons each, okay? That entire fire was fought from the air, until we pretty much got it.
Yes.
And then, and then they went in with the land crew, and it took, I think it was a total of 40 days before it was put out.
Yeah, it was a while, because of the accessibility to the area, it was mainly an air attack on the fire, but we were able to extinguish it eventually.
So we have a lot of resources on Oahu that don't exist elsewhere. This is an incredibly well-trained department. Ma'am?
Mahalo for being here, my name is PM Azeng, I'm in District 30, can you hear me? My concern is, I'm in 96818 area code, and we have about 19 schools in that vicinity. I'm concerned about the crosswalks being painted or repainted around those schools. They're in disrepair, and I think that needs some attention, if we're all about safety, and safety for our keikis.
It's a great question. Roger, that's you, babe. Sir, my babe, I called Jean Albano babe, because he said after the fact, I knew he was going to get called up first. Go ahead. Go ahead.
So crosswalks and pedestrian safety too are really our top priorities too. And we're doing a lot in the area. We have, we're doing things that we haven't done for decades. We're putting in some sidewalks in other areas. I think we have one in the Gulik area that we're doing in Kalihip. Our priorities.
Because that floods at night, a minute floods.
Our priorities, our schools for our K K, that's, we have, we know, we've done a survey islandwide of our pedestrian facilities, and we have 800 miles of facilities that we consider to be substandard that we're trying to get to. And we work with area council members, we work with both the council members here to try to prioritize and to do it. Now, we're fortunate because of the new federal IIJA law, and the department has been successful in going to get monies for sidewalk improvements for crosswalks. Now, the crosswalks are a tough issue, that we have taken out crosswalks in some places. The places that we take them out are really because they are too wide for being uncontrolled. We don't, we don't take them out when they're in, when there's a pedestrian, when there's a cross, when there's a traffic signal or anything like that. But in some cases, what the federal government has found is that for roadways that are more than four, four lanes or more wide, if the crosswalk is so-called unprotected, marked but unprotected, what they found is a disproportionate number of disabled and even elders that get hurt in those environments. So what we are trying to do, part of our project is to make our, make our uncontrolled, without a traffic signal, crosswalks safer by doing some other things to them. You can see that we've raised some of the crosswalks, but there's a lot of treatments we can do that we, that can make the pedestrian environment safer. And that's, and the good news is that we have a robust program. It's just that we have 800 miles, and that's going to take us decades to go around and really address all of the needs that we need, that we have.
Do you have any problems soliciting or recruiting the churches that are in that area? Sometimes you just need to knock on doors and say, we need man, we need skill, you know? Have you intended to connect with the churches that are in the vicinity of the schools? Because I know Fern did a project.
Right. We did a great project for Fern, and that one, it's one that we're proud of, and we hold it up as an example of the kind of project that we could do in other areas. I'm not sure I get the connection with the churches.
Manpower, womanpower, commitment to the area.
I get that part, but, but, you know, I mean, we involve all the stakeholders in a neighborhood when we're doing that. And certainly, you know, reaching out to places of worship and other places, that's a great idea.
Mahalo.
Thank you. Thank you, Roger. Okay. Incidentally, you folks there don't want to stand up the whole time. There's some seats up here. I say only say it once, it's your choice. Lori McCarney.
Good evening, Mayor and Leadership of the Administration. Thank you for being here tonight. My name's Lori McCarney. I'm on the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board, Thirteen. I want to thank you for everything that you're doing for our district, and we can see that some improvements. And I just want to ask if you can help us with one more thing. And that is, we want to get more active, we want to get more activated downtown. More parades and events, more event, you know, just more things happening there. And I think something happened in 2011 that put the kabosh on some of that stuff. So we want to take that off, and we want to work with you all to see how we might do it. I know that there is a cap on the number of activities and parades and street closures for Kalakala. So maybe there are some people that would like to have events or parades, and they don't know where to go. And we would be, we would welcome that. And so I'm just asking how we might, how we might pursue that. But again, thank you again.
Who am I looking at? Roger Morton? Be, okay?
Well, we also do all the permits for parades and the street use. And, you know, we'd like to see more parades that gravitate from Waikiki, where we have too much, we have an abundance of festivals there. We jam up the traffic too many times. Meanwhile, we have lots of places in Kakaoko, in Copole, in downtown, where we could, and we would love to encourage that. Now, we have had some issues in downtown with some of the events that have been there. We've had good ones. We've had others that were problematic where we, they've had too much alcohol fueling some of them in the downtown area. But those, but in general, you know, I know the mayor has, wants to, you know, particularly we've got opportunities in College Walk, we got opportunities in the Ala Park area. We would frankly, we would like to take a look at whether or not DTS should regain control of, like Fourth Street Mall, because we can't really have any activities there that would have alcohol because of park rules. So there's a, but in terms of trying to get more activity downtown, I mean, personally myself, I think that's important for the entire island, that we have a vibrant downtown Chinatown.
Yeah. And, you know, on a, on a little bit longer term, broader base, sort of happening now, is that there's a lot of housing that's going to happen. You know, the O'Davies Building is adaptive reuse, was all formerly office. That's underway. Hocking Halei, the old First Hawaiian Bank Building now, that'll be open this year. There's other projects we're working on. There's some things that are kind of under an NDA, I can't tell you, that are in escrow, all of which involve a lot more people living downtown, which is good. Not the least of which is our expectations on what Christine Camp is going to do with her acquisition of Walmart and the construction of some housing there. So that said, with the restaurants there, we want it to be vibrant. We want to have more activities. Candidly, we kind of put the kabosh, and she's mentioned that word, on the Halloween thing this year, because we want to have events that are controlled, that are safe for people. And so, as Roger said, you know, there's no drinking in the parks, and we're taking a look at that on, with certain events and trying to be user-friendly. But we don't want to have, you know, crazy events with a lot of out-of-control people either. So we want it to be safe. But I can promise you we're focused on that. And just one editorial point, since I've had the privilege of being in it the last two years, the last two Chinatown parades during Chinese, they've been wonderful, unbelievable. I mean, it was, they were tremendous, and it was just an example of the energy and the spirit. Wes, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to make you an honorary Chinese, so thank you very much. Actually, I want to thank the city. I'm Wesley Fong, I'm the past President of the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, and also Chair of Neighborhood Board, Fourteen. Lori, thank great job, and for the homeless over there, Anton, and HPD. I wanted to thank, we want to thank the city for really making Chinatown safe and secure. And to me, in regards to the homeless, and more so, you know, in regards to the improvements, less crime. Two questions, real quick. What do you have planned for Chinatown to make it even better than it is now and attract business? So our merchants, who are selling their papayas and bananas, how do they make a better living? That's the first question. Second question is.
It's a two-part question, but that's okay, Wes. I should have known coming from you. Go ahead.
And the other question, real quick. I know you had in mind of developing the River Walk.
Yes.
In Chinatown.
Yes.
To make it something look like San Antonio or Chicago.
Well.
Are we still going to do that? Thank you.
Yeah, that's ambitious, San Antonio, Chicago. Krishna, you want to talk about the security cameras for opening? Open is one of the things I'm excited about.
Colonel, it's good to see you. What the mayor is referring to is our program for the security cameras. So we've already installed seven. By the end of this calendar year, we'll have a total of 52. They'll go from Vineyard to Harbor, Bishop Street to Reverse Street. So we should have them on island by June, and then we'll be installing them slowly throughout the rest of the year. So we're very excited about that. It'll make a big difference. Sure. So these cameras are a massive upgrade compared to what was installed back in 2000. Obviously, it'll have 360-degree capability, it'll have night capability, it'll also have lights and sirens and things like that as well. To begin with, it'll be, it'll be watched by people, but DIT is already hard at work trying to figure out how we incorporate AI into this so that we can have that capacity to track what's happening.
Yeah, I'll be a second. And yes, Anton, come on. I'm going to appeal to anybody who has something to offer on this, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Wes, thanks for your comments. One of the things that is happening when you talk about more things in Chinatown is Palahi Halei. Now, that's been closed for a bit, but that street has been a tough street to deal with. And we, we did a nice relationship with, with the River of Life Fish and them moving their feeding operations to different parts of the island, and that has been very successful for them, and it's been successful for us in Chinatown. I think you also asked us to kind of evaluate the Safe Haven Program, and we were able to sunset that program, and it's moved now into permanent supportive housing, so we've gotten that done. So you might see the building's boarded up now, and we're doing the planning stages for development of that building for a community affordable housing. And within that plan, we'll have, not only will we develop that building and make it nice on that street, but we'll have service providers in that building and really make it a community, really a group of people that'll be working together. They'll have their own rules that'll be responsible to the Chinatown community. At the same time, we're working on how we can see if we can open up those bathrooms down below, so the public will have public bathrooms on the street there. So, you know, we're looking forward to some of these things. And when I say, you know, doing these, you know, end of year, beginning of the next year, so it's not far away. So thank you for all of your support. I appreciate it.
Also, we, Wes, we, you know, selling bananas and papayas, we are just about ready to complete our Kekaliki project. And the last part of that will be, we're going to put in a nice dragon in the middle of the mall, and I was down there today, walking around, watching the people. Now that we have the center part all completed, you watch the people just walking easily. We improved the drainage there for the merchants, and it looks, it looks fantastic right now. Our plan is to continue that down to beyond, beyond King Street down to Nimitz, and that'll lead us down to our Chinatown station, which will be, you'll have a great promenade all the way from central Chinatown down to the station.
Thank you, Roger. Rick Keane, don't you want to answer something to that nice lady that was up here? Ask her a question? So I'll do it for you. Don't forget, Skyline is under construction, and it will get there. It will be there in the early 30, 31 like that. But that's also something that as we come even closer, we're down to the Dilliam Corridor, will be open to Middle Street by the latter part of 25. That's going to change the dynamics of that, but that's one thing. We just bought recently four acres, Evil A. We're going to do a lot with that. We're going to be putting that out for development, mixed use in the interim. It's going to be a triage center for us. But we're also in negotiations with a number of parcels in that area, because it's all adjacent to where Chinatown was. And we've got transformative plans for that. And, and we also are going to probably turn the First Hawaiian Bank Building, which we bought last year, well, this year I think we did, but I think we're working with the state, and Sam knows about this, and Anton as well, and I think we're going to be able to use that in the interim until we can do the development to be another, like what the state just put in in partnership with us, the psychiatric at the Evil A Resource Center, we're going to put another 30 beds in there, staffed with medical professionals. I think you're going to see us eliminating the homeless that are in there. The other thing is, since it has been brought up, we are really focused. We have several members from our core team tonight. And Ian, you should talk about this, but part of what we've done, not only just with River of Life, but we talked about cleaning up Chinatown. That involves two things. One was a criminal element, which is still an ongoing battle, and the police will tell you that. We've made a lot of arrests down there, and everything else we could possibly do. But we're also working very aggressively with our homeless population. A year ago, we didn't have places to put them. We have now developed that. And we developed, the first thing we did when we came in, and we knew that homelessness was a problem, it still is. We did a research study tonight, and even though it represents about 4,000 people in Oahu, 2,000 sheltered, 2,000 unsheltered, those 2,000 unsheltered people seemingly are everywhere in everybody's face. And many of them, many of them, more than 50% have been on the streets for 10 years or more, and really, for normally high percentage, suffer from some form of addiction or mental illness. They're not easy to deal, you need to deal with that medically. So we developed our mobile crisis unit, CORE, which were on Polahi Street and in Evil A, the two locations. And we're now developing facilities, and we're working with the state to provide the healthcare workers we really needed there, and a number of nonprofit organizations like Catholic Charities, like IHS, like Luther and Services, which you'll probably hear more about. So that's also part of the issue in making it safe. And just this week, we were able to pick up a couple of people who had just been laying on sidewalks for a long time, who really don't even have, and because we can take them somewhere and provide care for them, and not doing what people used to do, which was simply call 911, they would then dispatch EMS and the police. They would both go to the scene, nothing violent going on, the police would leave. The ambulances would either treat them there or take them to Queens, they'd clean them up in a couple of hours and put them back out, and that wasn't dealing with it systemically. So that's a major effort for us. And we studied a number of cities who are doing it really well, and it's taken us a while to get it going. But the X factor, and this is where the collaboration with the state comes in, the X factor is we haven't had the healthcare workers to be able to work with them. So our mobile crisis unit right now is five ambulances, six SUVs, and about 36 bedded women, all trained. We're going to expand that because we want to go island-wide coverage. So the ability to pick them up without involving our police, because the 911 calls get rerouted, or EMS, which was very costly. Queens Hospital was losing over half a billion dollars a year, not the least of which is the emergency rooms were turned into an, almost like a war zone, and people coming in there had, it's not good, not good. So this is one of those things, you ask me how we're going to make it better? This is a big deal we're doing, and we're really focused on both the criminal element, well, let's just say the human element of making it better, because that has been one of the things that lends itself not only to unsafe, not being safe, but it's a detraction for people to go down there. I mean, let's face it, nobody wants to walk by or walk over somebody who's laying on us, other than that. So we're doing that. Ian, anything you want to embellish?
Mayor, you did such an excellent job. I don't think you need me anymore.
No, I'm just proud of the work your team does. Maybe you should introduce them.
The mayor is really passionate. I just want to tell you guys, you know, I've worked for the city for 26 years. This mayor is very passionate about the homeless out there and trying to help everybody out. And he has a great vision and a plan for it, and we're working very hard to achieve it. And the core program under the mayor's leadership has been here since December of 2021, and we started with six people and we're up to the 36 that he's there. Our goal is to be 50 by the end of the year and have island-wide coverage. So we just want to.
And tell them a little bit about the training. In fact, let's just have them stand up. We've got five or six of them in the audience tonight.
So our core program is here tonight, a bunch of them, they work the night shift. They're all in the red shirts in the back if you haven't seen them. So again, CORE stands for Crisis Outreach Response and Engagement. As the mayor identified, we have emergency medical technicians, we have paramedics, we have nurses, we have physicians, we have APRNs, and we have community health workers that range from basic entry case management all the way up to advanced case management and 20-plus years of service out there. So again, with the leadership of the mayor and what we're trying to do to address both Chinatown, Waikiki, downtown, and islandwide, we work it one step at a time collaboratively with all the nonprofits that the mayor mentioned. So we look forward to continuing our program and to expand it throughout the entire city.
Great, excellent. Couple of other things, since you brought up River Walk and College Walk, but before that, American Savings Bank deserves a lot of credit for their vision putting in that building and the fact that they spend a million dollars a year in private security to take care of Ala Park. And that has gone through a transformation, and will continue to do so, and we're very, very supportive of that. And there's other things, and they're involved, Lori, with actually scheduling events. I met with Anter Anishi recently, and now that they feel like they've got it there, they're actually starting to schedule a lot of things down there. And again, we want to be more user-friendly. And the fact that we cleaned up Sun Yet Send Park, and, you know, right next to Hawaii Theater, was no small endeavor, and we've actually had some free concerts. Theater, was no small endeavor, and we've actually had some free concerts, we want to have more of that kind of stuff, where it's kind of a hip urban night, come down for free. The several that we already put on that was underwritten were very successful, and we want to create that feel, want people to feel comfortable. The River Walk is a really interesting thing, because it is a phenomenal piece of property, and that was built around 1900, okay? You couldn't build that today. 50-foot wide sidewalks on both sides, that rock work that was done goes back to the turn of the last century, and even after the robotic plate, when they burned most of the buildings in Chinatown, that stood there. And so we opened up as our team by putting housing in there, you know? That affordable housing unit, Haleviolo, not Haleviolo, what, Mike, Haleviolo, I got it right, I've got so many names in my head, is, was, was an undertaking that was promised over 20 years and never happened. And so that was a part of also, trying to activate, but the River, the, the Cultural Plaza is the problem. The River Walk has potential, but the Cultural Plaza, which is privately held and owned by the Taiwanese government, and I've now worked with two different council generals, most recently Richard Lynn, who's going back, it's not been the most ideal time because of what's been going on in Taiwan, and they've gone through elections and a change in leadership and so on, not the least of which is their preoccupation and focus, but we are on their radar screen now, and they're willing to open, and I'm telling somebody for the first time publicly, half the people behind me don't know this, because I just learned about it over the weekend, they're willing to consider doing a joint venture as a government with the private sector here for pretty much knocking down the Cultural Plaza and doing a mixed-use housing, retail, all that kind of stuff we'd like to see go in there. Because right now, right now, we can't even send our police in there because it's privately owned, and we know what goes on after hours, and they've got to chain it up and everything. So that, that whole thing is ill-conceived, maybe from a different time. So part of the revitalization of River Walk itself and the activities that we could do is to try to take on the Cultural Plaza. In the meantime, we're going to look for events that we could do. You know, one of the things that is happening now on Hotel Street is outdoor dining, and we did work on that, we think we'd like to see some of that expand itself out, but those are older restaurants, they're right there along the Cultural Plaza. So that's going to be our next big attempt, and I don't want to sound presumptuous, but we feel like we've got four and a half years left. This is a complicated project, this news I got this weekend is the first time they were willing to entertain that. What is it? I said Halevi, I said it, and I didn't know if I got it right, you know? I did, thank you, yeah, thank you, yeah. So anyway, those are some of the things, and I, and we want to work, I see Mike in here from the Chinese neighborhood, we want to work everybody and anybody and all the help we can get, okay? Because this is about a community helping us help you, sir. Thank you.
My name is Mike. I saw your State of the City speech earlier this year and totally agree with all of your housing positions.
Thank you.
We need more affordable housing, more transition housing, and so on. I'm actually asking about an event that you had about two months ago downtown with the Neighbor Island Police Chief Steve Baum about cannabis legalization. I thought that was a totally one-sided event, and I know that one of the primary reasons everyone was opposed to it was for the keke, and I know that it's been legal in Washington now for 10 years, and youth, usage by the youth has declined by more than half as a result of legalization, and I'm just wondering, if, if it's worse for the keke, can you give me an example of a state where the keke are worse off now than they were before it was legalized? Because it's not the case in Washington.
Well, I don't know if I have to give you an example of a state where they're worse, so-
I'm looking for evidence, evidence.
I know, you're looking for evidence, and we took a position, we talked to our medical community, we think a lot of the stuff that's out there is not good for our kids, not just beyond marijuana, and we just want to lower the bar on recreational marijuana for Hawaii right now. People have told me it's inevitable it's going to happen, we don't believe that, there's 24 states that have legalized it, 38, excuse me, have medical marijuana, let me just finish. And we supported the dispensaries and everything we could with medical marijuana, but at a time right now, where we lead the nation in teen suicides, at a time right now when vaping is out of control, I just didn't feel like lowering the bar, okay?
None of those have anything to do with cannabis legalization. Literally, they have nothing to do with it.
Thank you, we're not going to debate that issue tonight.
I'll give you this, I mean, you can definitely agree with that.
You can give me that, thank you, thank you.
But you stay down to gradually where it's legalized.
Okay, I appreciate it.
That seems like a win for the keke.
You know, I appreciate your position, it'd be a cold day in hell, you can convince me of that, but I appreciate what you just said. All right, good, good, okay. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. My name is Ernest Carvalho, I am the past president of the Honolulu Chinatown Alliance Club, and I am the current chair of Neighborhood Board 13 Downtown Chinatown. I speak tonight on behalf of myself as an individual and a resident of downtown Chinatown. First of all, I would like to thank all of you seated here, and Mayor Blang Giardi, for what you guys have done to downtown Chinatown. We have seen an uptick and revitalization of our community. We are on the path moving forward to positiveness within our neighborhoods, but we still have areas of concern. I'm glad the mayor talked about Sunyet Send Park, we need that cleaned up. Again, the houseless have decided to do a revolving door and come up there, and it really needs to get cleaned up. But my topic tonight is mostly about, will you folks support the bill that's going to be going through City Council on illegal game rooms? Will you support this bill and send it through? These illegal game rooms are big concerns in our community, because they attract those that are doing illegal substances, drugs, meth, crack, alcohol. They are bringing people that are not good within our community, who criminalizes our community and who bullies the people in our neighborhood. What can you do and how will you help us with that? Other than that, we are seeing an uptick in the right direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ernest. Michael, you want to take this? Who wants to take it? Dawn? Okay. Dawn Apuna, Director of Department of Planning and Perimetering.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for your question. So there's a, a lot of partnership that's going on within the city with H P D, D P P, and H F D to, to address this game room problem. And they have, it's been H P D's lead on this operation follow-through, and they've found out that when they can involve H F D and D P P on the code violations, that the owners seem to react. They seem to realize there's major issues, there's fines coming my way, I don't want these tenants to use my property in this way for game rooming. And so that has been very effective, I think Bill 57 and Bill 58. So we are still trying to work through Bill 57 to see how we can use that to strengthen our partnership and our ability to go after these game rooms. Bill 58, the same, to allow H P D to kind of partner more and act as building inspectors to some, to some degree. So definitely, we are very supportive of cracking down on these game rooms, H P D, H F D, and D P P all working together to do that, and we'll see how the bills can help us do that. But I think there has been major gains and successes in some of the operations that have been completed. So yes, we are supportive of anything to get rid of these game rooms in, in our community.
Thank you. Mike, is there anything you want to add to it? Anything, Chief, anything you want to add, Ryan?
Thank you for your question and concern. I, I don't want to get too much into it, because like Donald was saying, we do have operations going on, and without disclosing too much, I will say that our, our commanders here, like District One and District Five Kalihii, they, their crew units have identified those illegal game rooms and, and these illegal bars that are popping up everywhere that contribute to the drugs and whatever else. So we do, we, we have identified areas and we are working on them, I will tell you that we do have some operations going on, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello, so I'm Cardenas Pintor, I'm the Vice Chair of Kalihii Palama Neighborhood Board. My question is regarding basically disabilities, because whenever I look at like the roads and the bus, we, I always ask myself, how is this, you know, accessible rather than ADA compliant? Because the sidewalks aren't really like wide enough, they're very narrow, and it's really hard for wheelchair users to get around, so I'm kind of curious how does the process with like ADA work? And also with the bus, I actually did have a friend that basically, she used the bus, and the ramp didn't work, so she had to basically pop a wheelie to get off the bus, and that was, that's not really good. So I'm just curious, how does the process work for being considered ADA accessible rather than compliant?
Sure, for, for the bus, I, you know, I spent 42 years at the bus and was there when we started converting our buses to be accessible with either lifts or ramps. And we're proud of, of what we've done. If we do have a malfunctioning lift, we'll take that bus out of service immediately and do it. With respect to, you know, for, for example, on our Skyline operation, we've made our contractor purchase accessible vans in the event that an elevator goes out of service, that they're required to jump in and provide an alternative travel. With, with respect to bus stops themselves, I have an annual program at about a, at about a $3 million level, where we, where the purpose of the program is to take, make, make more and more of our bus stops ADA accessible. Now, the rules are that if we put in a new bus stop or make a substantial change, then we need to upgrade that bus stop. There are many bus stops on the island that still are not accessible. It is a long-term project for us to make them accessible, to make them good landing places for them. And I know that our Department of Design and Construction also has a, a project to, to do it. And I'll ask Hakutu just to talk about, a little bit about the scale of what they do on sidewalks and other places.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you for the question. Yeah, so we also have a curb ramp program that if, if you notice an issue with accessibility to, to public, right-of-way curb ramps, you can notify the city, I'll get you that information, and then we, we will do an assessment, we'll work with Department of Transportation Services and see what we can do to improve accessibility for that intersection. Yeah, thank you.
You know, one of the things that we've encountered in stating the obvious, and Anton, we'll hear from you, there are a lot of neighborhoods that don't even have sidewalks, much less narrow sidewalks, and we've heard in other meetings, people want sidewalks, we went out in Waikiki last week, that's one issue. And then we've got a lot of other road issues to deal with and so on, so I'm not making excuses, I'm just telling you, I, I understand about accessibility with our public transportation vehicles, I'm not so sure you can count and see sidewalks widen necessarily anytime soon unless it's new construction. I hope I'm not misspeaking, but Anton, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I was kind of intrigued when you started talking, because it, I, I'm not sure everything was a physical problem, I think you were talking somewhat about some of the people trying to get around and, and some of those things. And I think, you know, we do a lot of social services, so I'll come around when we finish the next question, and I'll get your name, and let's interact on some of that, whether it's elderly or other social programs that we can do that you kind of understand the issues and, and how we can direct you, I'll, I'll circle around to you, okay?
Thank you, Anton. Truwan?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Truwan Shubert Quark, Chinatown. I just want you to raise the case of Jean's people, because they've really been keeping Chinatown clean and nice for years and years. And I, I always greet them and say hello to them, and I'm really appreciating the very difficult work they do. So please, have a shout-out to Marlene and the crew, I know them for a long time. And not only that, H P D and D P S at parks have been very integral part of Chinatown to help us, you know, make a go of it, because it's been difficult. But I do want to highlight our ADA sidewalks in Chinatown. They are very outdated, and I don't think they're in good compliance, but there are some areas that are very dangerous, sidewalks. And then the other part that I wanted to bring, I didn't want to take too much time, is that I found out that the Sunyet Send Mall is not usable because it's a fire lane. So if we're going to revitalize Chinatown, we need to make sure we can use the Sunyet Send Mall for activities that we are hoping to stage. So could you guys look into it and why it's a fire lane, and why can't we use it?
That's the first I heard, it's a violation. Anybody want to comment, Laura? We, we did some of those concerts in there, what's, uh-
So, thank you, we can look into the fire lane issue, but I don't think it would cover the entire width, and so we think-
It's the riverside where the Dr. Sunyet Send statue-
Yeah.
From Baricania to Kukui Street.
Right.
So we have applied for a permit to do the Buddha Hawaii, First Buddha Hawaii Peace Festival, and we were turned down, and, and we were told that it's a fire lane, we can't use it, so we have to reuse our activities into the Chinese Cultural Plaza. I didn't know about it either.
So, so we can look into that for you, but we know in the conversation that we've been having about making the area more pleasant for residents, you heard a lot earlier about removing some of the, the bad elements and taking care of people there, but we know that a big part of making the city vibrant is also having the positive events. And so we've done a, a big effort around Adopt a Park and permitting of events, we revitalized the whole Adopt a Park program, and in the last couple years, we've brought on 100 partners that have been doing dozens and dozens of events themselves across the island. Mayor mentioned American Savings Bank, they're one of our partners, and we've been working with them to have a lot of activities go on at Ala Park. We would like to do more Adopt a Parks in the area, so if you know groups that are interested in that, we would be happy to make it happen, and then we will take a look at that one area.
Thank you so much.
If there is an issue with the fire lane there, we have other areas in the vicinity where we can do things as well.
Part of the festival-
Right.
That we have gotten a permit from the Chinatown Cultural Plaza, that we want to extend it to all the groups and history, so that they can put up a tent and a table, and we were told that it's not possible.
Okay, and, and we think that area can support a lot of activities, so we'll, we'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, that's the first I heard, but you come up next. One of the other things that we're doing too, and Mike, you may want to embellish this, but I think we've finally got our heads around how to support the downtown art center. And, and so we've been, you know, Mike, I don't know if you want to add anything, but we've gone to a couple of events now lately, and we've been really encouraged by what we're hearing and what we're seeing. So anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, just a little bit, Mayor. We're, we're really trying to use the downtown art center as a stimulus for the entire community. So not just a gallery for the operator of the art center, but a program that provides all kinds of opportunities for other programs, keke programs, and I think we're going to succeed at this. The goal is to put out a longer-term lease so that they can borrow money, they get grants, and make it a thriving community asset. So we're working very hard, the mayor and I have a goal, I hope we succeed, and it's to try to put out a long-term lease at a very low dollar value per year, and let the money go back to the community. So that's the goal.
We have a brand-new board of directors, I know some of these people, have known them, it's an infusion of financial capital, intellectual capital, I'm encouraged, and there's a lot of passion there too, and I think at its core, we want downtown, in all of its splendor, to be a culturally rich place, of, of all, all of who we are as people. Ma'am, you want to come up? You go first.
It has, it has to do with-
You have to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jean Jeremiah.
Okay, Jean.
Okay. It has to do with noise volume. If you go around the Kakaako area, you're familiar, there's so many condominiums, residential condominiums, especially now under construction, there's about seven or eight all over that area. So the issue is the noise volume. I understand, granting that Kakaako Alamore area is both half-commercial, half-residential, but we have restaurants, karaoke's, bars, nightclubs, there's no control over the volume. I mean, watching TV, we even have to compete with the noise there, they have DJs, they have the karaoke, and then we have employees that have to go to bed at a certain hour to get to work the next morning, we have children that have, that are working on their homeworks and have to go to bed at a certain hour, but these places stay open till 1:32 in the morning.
Jean, are you talking about Kakaako, or are you talking about downtown? What are you talking about?
Kakaako area.
Okay.
Uh huh, yeah. So it's, and, and, and a lot of the residents are complaining, because again, karaoke, bars, nightclubs, and, and then aside from that, a lot of the customers, they're on their motorcycles, there's these group or clubs of motorcycles, and they just drive around the neighborhood with their loud mufflers in the middle of the night.
Yeah. Mike, anything you want to say about that?
Yeah, so Jean, this is the first time we've heard this for Kakaako.
Yeah.
We've heard it for Waikiki-
A lot for Waikiki.
And other communities, but first time for Kakaako. And I think we've spoken to this in the past- And I think we've spoken to this in the past, that it's a very complex issue. What we don't want is we don't want our public safety police officers to basically be sound patrols when there's much more things for them to do. And what we're trying to stay away is from it becoming an instrument that they have to have in their hand when they can't eliminate ambient noise and they can't go to court and prove the violation. So it just takes a lot of time out of police. But there is a noise ordinance, and if someone believes that an operation is operating beyond that noise ordinance, they can call HPD, and I think they will send somebody out to look at it. But I'll just tell you all, it's a really complex problem to solve, and I'm going to ask HPD to speak on it. It's a problem, a hard problem to solve, and we just don't want our police officers to be sound patrols when they need to be addressing bigger criminal elements.
You're absolutely right. The first time it was addressed was in the Waikiki Neighborhood Board Association, and so all those nightclubs there was addressed and resolved. And I don't know, they keep on approaching me and so forth, and I keep on telling them, pick up the phone, call your legislator, or the liquor license department. And the liquor license department has said that let your neighbors' residents know that the more complaint, to call the liquor license department, and the more complaints they get, the more it gives them justification not to renew the license. That's what I did, you know, and that's why you haven't heard, because we're trying to resolve it, not just my building, but like I said, Kakaako, all those other buildings, and they're complaining, and it just goes on.
All right, Jean, thank you. Really duly noted. Sir, you come up, then I've got a question. Thank you, Jean. Chief, did you want to... I'm sorry, I...
Like the managing director said, I haven't heard too many complaints about the Kakaako area with the noise. There was one big issue that we had one time, and we shut that down, it was an illegal concert. But if you do hear like those motorcycles, you know, driving around with the loud mufflers or whatever, you know, call 911, we'll send an officer out to go check, and there are some violations that we can cite for.
Do you want to call HPD if they think it's a noise?
But, you know, but if...
Not on campus.
Yeah, but for the noise complaints, I mean, if you do call us, we track it, we log it, so that if there are future complaints, we can see that, okay, maybe this building had so many complaints, you know, so it'd be easier for us to go and attack them.
Thank you, Chief. Are you guys together? Okay, then just one at a time, just take it, see, we'll get to you. I just don't want to be blocking people from seeing what's going on, okay? Sorry to be so directive, but, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Eduardo Hernandez, and I live here in Kakaako, and I work for the Hawaii Bicycling League. So some of the things that we've been talking about tonight really do kind of come back to, a bicycle can be an answer for transportation, for climate resiliency, for affordability, for personal health. And so I just want to thank you. Living in Kakaako, I get to benefit from some of the great improvements that have come online recently, and we're really excited about protected bikeways that we have here and upcoming projects that are coming that's going to take King Street into Kalihie, and this is so important to create a safer environment for cyclists. As you know, we recently had a very tragic incident, and so investing in safe cycling is really great, and I want to thank you for doing that and encourage you to keep it up, so thank you.
Eduardo, I can promise you we're going to keep it up. Matt or Roger, you guys want to say anything, because you guys are getting the kudos, but Matt Gons has been involved in our Complete Streets too, wherever Matt is, so...
Well, from the bicycle side, you know, we've put a lot of emphasis in the bikes. You mentioned the North King Street project, which is about ready to start. We also have an ongoing partnership with our state Department of Transportation. We are going to be embarking on what we're calling a self-shore bike plan, and that's a very ambitious plan to get a good network of bicycles all the way from Nanakuli to UH Manoa, going through Kalihie, going through central Honolulu. So, I mean, bikes, you know, we partner with you at the Hawaii Bike League, we do that, you know, we have a couple of bike education programs. You guys do a great job of doing that for the city. Kind of commend you guys for that, too. And we're looking for, you know, a better bicycle future for everybody. We have our Alaponno Bridge, which is another, you know, big-time facility. Sometimes some people love it, some people hate it, but...
That's the bridge over the Alawai.
Yep.
He's talking about...
We, you know, but we want to have a connected system, and that's an important project to us that connects UH Manoa to Waikiki. There's a lot of connections of students that live and work in Waikiki or play in Waikiki and use, and we want to encourage them to use bicycles, so we're doing a lot, and we plan to do a lot more.
Thank you, Roger. Matt, anything you want to add? No, that's good. Eduardo, thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. This gentleman here, come on up, sir. You were next. And then after you, I know this guy behind, man behind you, I want to read a question from the audience, and then we'll get to you. How's that? Okay? Sorry, we'll get to you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Alan. I'm a resident of Kalihie Valley, and I'd like to just say that I've got a lot of things that I can say that can make the Honolulu County better, but you know what? I know that mayor, staff, and all you guys out there that represent the city, trying the best you can to make this enjoyable and pleasant place to live within the rules and the laws and the resources you folks have. So I'd just like to commend the work that you folks do.
Thank you.
And I know we all have things to do, but, you know, we decided to live here in Honolulu. When I travel to the mainland and people find out I come from Hawaii, man, they just bucket list to get here. We live here, you know? You folks can agree with me, no matter what we think and suggest to make it better, this is the best place to live in the world, Honolulu County.
Thank you.
So, you know, whenever we complain, I know you guys live here, you guys decided to live here because this is the best place to be.
Oh, I love it.
So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And I'll bring my complaints another time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That was not paid for. That came from the heart, and we really appreciate it. And I can tell you right now, every one of these people behind me could be doing something a lot more lucrative than what they're doing. A lot of skill here, a lot of knowledge, a lot of well-educated people. They have a passion for everything he just said. This is our home, this is where we live. Before I read this question, I do want to acknowledge, because I didn't say it in the beginning, our communications team is here. Scott Humbert, Director for Communications, stand up, Scott. Ian Schering. Ryan Wilson. She has to put up with those three guys. I just thought I'd give her the... Whatever, but thank you. So we did get a question, and then we'll get right back in line. It says, "What is being done about cars driving with expired registrations and expired safety checks?" That has a lot of money that the state can collect. Also, why not make the registration bigger, like the safety check? So police can tag those, police can tag those vehicles, and it's easy to see. It's more important to see the registration sticker. Oh, she's talking about make the sticker bigger, like the safety check. It's the sticker, bigger, so it'd be more visible. You know, Rick Hamada was in the audience, I think he just left. I got asked this on the... There's Rick, just yesterday on the radio, we got asked the same thing. You know, and I think somebody behind me should handle this, but we know for a fact that there are a lot of expired registrations and safety checks. And we know that. I mean, I've heard some percentages thrown out there. When we've tried to drill down on it, it really is an unfortunate circumstance, because a lot of people say, "I didn't have the money to pay for my registration or my safety check," or the car maybe couldn't do it, and they're going to take a chance. And that is really taking on an incredible amount of personal liability, aside from the fact that it's not legal, but you really put yourself in harm's way. We don't have enough police officers right now, and this is not an excuse, to be checking all of that. And whether you know this or not, we actually have more cars registered on the island than we do people. It's one of the really fun facts about the island of Oahu. And so this is a condition we're going to just keep hopping on in public education. And, you know, you just got done saying about the pride we have in living here. This is about, there's some elements and some things that are left to community trust. All of us have to act as responsible individuals to each other, you know? We say all the time, and God knows, I've been involved in enough Mothers Against Drug Driving and other groups, you know, that have suffered, you know, unnecessary fatalities and things in their families, but I would tell you, we tell all the time, you get behind the wheel of a car, it's a big responsibility. And saying, "Don't drink and drive," is one thing, but driving with a car that has an expired safety check and something's wrong with that car that could lead to an accident, or for that matter, not paying your registration, the legal liability of that, if you should be involved in an accident, it's a lot, lot more than whatever that cost would be to do that. So I don't know if there's anybody back here that wants to touch on that. We know that, we try to do it through public education. This is sort of an honor system. I realize that our police on occasion could pull somebody over, but I've heard enough. In fact, Rick and I heard yesterday, this guy stood on a street corner and counted the number of cars, and there are no reasons to doubt him, but we know it's out there. Okay? All right. Well, somebody was waiting...
Oh, thanks for doing this. My name's Thomas Brant. I'm sorry, I have to bend over like this, but I'm a 45-year resident of Hawaii, 38 years downtown. I have two, excuse me, two brief questions I think are related, affordable housing and rail. I'll be honest, I'm a rail skeptic. I don't think taxpayers will ever get their money's worth out of it. I think it's basically going to benefit private landowners adjacent to the rail. So one question is, are you aware of and in favor of what's called a value capture fee? A state statute already exists, it's never been used, that allows the counties to do just that, to tax back some of the unearned windfall increases in property values from being rail-adjacent for private owners. I think in the old days, they used to call that tax increment financing or something. But that should go back to the taxpayers, not to the city government. The other one is on affordable housing. I know you were at Peter Savio's presentation a while back.
Yes, I was.
No, he wasn't. He thinks, among others, that we can make and keep affordable housing reserved for local residents without violating the U.S. Constitution by spending state and/or county money on construction rather than subsidizing private for-profit developers by using local taxpayer money on infrastructure. That's the key without violating the Interstate Commerce Code. And I can't breathe when I'm in here like this.
Sorry.
So those are the two basic questions. If you're favored, that kind of affordable housing development and the value capture fee. Thank you.
Yeah, those are very complicated questions to give your answers to. I do like Peter Savio. Peter Savio is, he's an exceptional guy. He thinks out of the box, but I would tell you, I've tried to run some of his ideas up the flagpole, and there's a lot of issues. That said, I think Peter would tell you what we did out in Verona Village, of which he was a part of, again, decades in the making, was pretty incredible. So look, we're staying open to everything, but I'd like to do, because that's complicated, just hang around, and we'll talk when this... We're already almost at 8 o'clock. I'd like to find out more about that. I'm not a tax guy, I guess some people up here who can talk about that, okay? Sir, I know what you're going to talk about. I can hear it coming.
First and foremost, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Appreciate, wish you the best of luck for this season, for this season.
Thank you.
And for your staff and members. My question would be basically to the law enforcement fire department. Basically, you know, I think in leadership, we lead by example. Integrity is a definition, so I wanted to ask the question, how can we legalize aerial fireworks? How can we get permits from the fire department to purchase aerial fireworks? Not sure what type of homeland security we have in the state of Hawaii, but I think...
You're talking about permits for aerial fireworks? Or was you just simply saying everybody gets a permit, but it's illegal, it suddenly becomes legal?
Well, what I'm saying is, if I do to the integrity of law, that we all lead by example, I would like to use aerial fireworks.
And I have to tell you...
But, but we can't, so...
Yeah, well...
So I just wanted to ask the question...
Yeah, no, it's okay. I appreciate the question.
Where are we at with the law enforcement, you know, type of things that are going on?
I think a fire department... Chief, if you could take a stab there, let me just tell you. This year, I thought, we had Lahaina happen, and to me, Lahaina is still unimaginable. And I've been over there a number of times, and it's going to live on for a long time. And then we had, as we talked about earlier, the Milli-Lani wildfires and the concern that had. And then, those were in August and October respectively. And then, as part of the anticipation of the New Year's holiday, we did everything we could, in media, on television, radio, begging people, begging people not to set off aerial fireworks in their neighborhoods, because the potential for fire, with all the dryness that we've had, was incredible. Not the least of which is the damage it does to solar panels of people's houses, people almost feel victimized by that, and so on and so forth. I stood there in New Year's Eve in total disbelief, looking off my leni, which I could see from pretty good, the fact that it was almost like we encouraged everybody to use aerial fireworks. So you know, because it was reported, they're doing a lot of work and trying to intercept the illegal smuggling of fireworks. But I have to tell you, I can't imagine putting a law in the books that's going to allow people to do aerial fireworks in neighborhoods, knowing full well the risk that that creates. You know, the chance of fires happening and the devastation of those fires, if Lahaina didn't teach us something, then shame on us. So I don't know what else I can say.
I got to say, really appreciate the clarity, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything you want to add?
Yeah, so I, you know, the mayor, again, said it very well. You know, I echo everything he said, and the fire department is going to continue with our consistent stance that the aerial firecracker is a very extreme danger to the community, not only just the wildland fires, but if it lands on somebody's house where there's brush on it or leaves on it, and beyond damaging that and taking life, you also have injuries that just from people lighting the aerial firecrackers where people have actually passed. So our stance is that it's an extreme hazard that can really negatively impact the community.
Really appreciate that, Chief.
Appreciate your...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the question.
If I can just add, just wanted to know, you know, is there any way, you know, there's a hotel, yeah, Hawaiian Village, I think.
Hilltop Hawaiian Village, they do it on Friday nights.
Is anyone, like, monitoring all the pounds and pounds and pounds and pounds of aerial fireworks they bring to the state of Hawaii? I mean, with Caesar laws, you know, that kind of laws that can come and escape.
Actually, I'm really glad you asked that question, because we don't monitor what is coming in, in that sense, but we do monitor, so for example, Hilltop and Hawaiian Village and other commercial fireworks displays, which we actually encourage because this is an opportunity for the community and to enjoy the firecracker, the aerial firecracker in a controlled environment. And we do closely regulate the permit, and we actually, every, for example, the Hilltop and Hawaiian Village on Friday nights, we have an inspector out there that checks it all out before they do it, and is very strict on the regulations.
So just a question for the law enforcement portion. So is there laws where you can seize the property, utilize it to help pay the rail and everything else that we have that's going on?
I haven't heard about anything about seizing property.
Illegal, illegal property, like Caesar laws? Do we have laws like that, like to seize the property, illegal, utilize the money laundering type of...
Are you talking about like physical, like a house kind of property?
No, so I'm trying to ask the question. The question is, you know, when you have money laundering, like, somebody got to be paying for it, right, the illegal area? Somebody's making profit. You guys don't get to find out who's doing it and seize their property, seize their money... You guys don't get to find out who's doing it and seize their property, seize their money, and use it for the good?
So, we, we do have our narcotics vice division, along with, um, some other support units that do investigations like that, um...
And that was my question, if you guys are...
Yeah, so there, there are some laws in place that we, where we do seize the fireworks, um, and then when they do undercover operations and stuff, whatever cash and stuff is affiliated with that, we can't forfeit. But, um, you know, as you know, I mean, there, there are a lot more fireworks than there are police officers on New Year's, Fourth of July, and whatever. So we, we do cite, we do go to violations, we get numerous calls, we bring in more staffing on those nights, those eaves.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Just my question is, are we working towards better? That's all.
We, we are, and the other good point I'll, I'll bring up too, is that the Department of Law Enforcement also has a task force that's engaged in this.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am, thank you for your question.
Hi, Evelyn Cullen.
Sydney Spencer Cullen.
Mom and daughter team, so I can ask more than one question. So we both were at a town hall meeting last year, and I see a lot of new faces this year.
Well, we have a mix of deputies and directors.
Oh, okay, okay. So, um, the person is for DPP, I'm going to kind of skew it quickly, um, eight-two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-three-one-four-five-zero, that's my son, he's twenty-nine now, four years, um, his building permit is not done. So I don't know how much quicker...
Well, we'll get your application number.
And then, um, I'm trying to add my home on to the TOD Klee Plan Spot Zoning, because where I live is in the I-2 Zone, it wasn't that before, I was too young to know what to do, now I'm older and much wiser, I want to rebuild and remain where I'm at, I'm only a couple of blocks away from Amazon, and I want to stay there. We're six generations deep, okay? Um, I'm also Kanakamali, if you can tell. My daughter is already trying to look to go to school in international places, so we've been taking her on spring break to New Zealand, to Australia next. Her end thing is to end up in Monaco, it's because she's thinking this will not be a place for her as a Kanakamali. I'm also educating all five of my children to rebuild and remain. Some of them are homeowners. She, my husband and I, we educate our kids to become really strong, independent, financial, know how to get things on their own and not look for handouts, so...
So, so your question, other than your son's permit...
Okay, um, tax cut, that's one big thing. Cut the fat from city government, so I can have my daughter change her mind and stay home with me, because, um, where I'm living, I had to go before city council to have them take away the industrial tax, so I'm grandfathered in as a residential right now, but before then, having five kids, I had to decide which kid is going to eat and which one wasn't. So now that I pay residential and it's grandfathered, I live in a termite-eaten home that I can only rebuild ten percent a year, that's not fair. I want to rebuild, I want my kids to, to come to grandma's house without worrying that they're going to hit the wall and it's going to fall. And I like Steve, Steve's my friend.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate it. Is there anything you want to say, young lady? We'll get your permit number on your son. The other stuff that you talked about, we're all dealing with, and we can't build housing fast enough. But I can tell you this, when you talk about cutting the fat from city government, I want you to identify that for me. I want you to tell me what you call fat, because I'm pretty familiar with our budget. I'd like to know what you think is we're wasting money.
The raises.
The raises?
Yeah, city council member, they just had one last year, now they're looking at having another one. I'm an educator, where the place, uh, at Kele Kalani, where this is supposed to take place tonight, I don't make enough to survive, you know?
Okay.
Thank you.
Point heard, thank you.
I'm, I'm the vigilante, so, and I'm also a neighborhood board member.
Good, thank you, thank you. Next up.
Hello, my name's Rebecca Foley.
Rebecca, if you could just speak a little closer to the microphone.
Um, I have communicated with a lot of you. I am a human trafficking victim in Chinatown area. The lack of resources and services for adult human trafficking victims in Hawaii, in Honolulu, and in Chinatown is unbelievable. There is two human trafficking organizations in Hawaii, they both deal with minors and youth only. The adult trafficking victims have no services. Domestic violence places refuse to address and help trafficking victims if their trafficking wasn't done by an intimate partner. IHS is an uncondusive safe place for a rape and trafficking victim to be. So that means there is a lot of lack of services. I left IHS after getting placed there by two trafficking organizations. It was an unsafe area. Now I sleep on the streets when I didn't go to them, homeless. The police look at me as a homeless person instead of a rape victim or a human trafficking victim. So I bring to you my situation, uh, so maybe people can start figuring out how to form these services, that the state of Hawaii, Honolulu, and Chinatown is severely lacking, because my situation shows it. Most people see my anger and the effects of my trauma, and they get lost in that, but that anger and those effects of that trauma comes from what I have survived on my own because of the gaps in society, in the government, in the organizations. So I am bringing my situation to the county, because these services need to be somehow figured out, because I am not the only adult trafficking victim in the state of Hawaii with a documented trafficking case, and there is zero services for me. I cannot get emergency housing, I cannot get a trafficking caseworker, I can't even get a victim's advocate, until the police hand my case over to a prosecuting attorney. There is huge gaps in this. Most people know me from cussing them out, I'm cussing them out because I'm asking for services and things I need, and there is no place for me, and my case is a part of Hawaii.
Well, Rebecca, that's a very compelling narrative, and my heart goes out to you.
And I'm sorry for cussing at everybody, but I'm not sorry for the effects...
That's okay, we understand the frustration, remember, were you here at the outset when I asked everybody to be civil, knowing that people are passionate about topics? Um, I don't think we can address it in this situation, why don't you stay around a little afterwards? I think it goes without saying, I'm not saying this to pass the buck, but the state controls the Department of Health and all of those kinds of resources. As it is, we're trying to organize ourselves for the human condition and what we're doing on our homeless front. I understand that you're part of that as well, but the kinds of things you're talking about, and those kinds of services, we're not really set up for something like that, but let's talk about that, Rebecca. If you would stay until eight-thirty, then we should get off the air, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, ma'am, I really appreciate you bringing these up, I don't know, are you taking off now? No? Yeah, I want, I, yeah, I can't imagine, um, but I'd like to, uh, meet with you and begin a dialogue, so we can maximize the things that are out there, maybe, maybe we haven't touched everything, and maybe you can be part, maybe you can be part of us creating some things that aren't there today. So I'll, I'll be, I'll put the mic down, but I'll come, come back and talk.
Thank you, Anton. Thanks, Rebecca, sir.
May God hear her prayers. Um, aloha, Mr. Mayor, administrative staff. Unlike most people here tonight, the communities that are here, I hail from a pretty unique community, Papu'olea Hawaiian Homestead. With that said, I might be bringing my concern to deaf ears, I don't know, because the jurisdiction thing comes into play with the state, the HHL, and the city. However, um, one of the issues that I'm, I'm bringing amongst many that this community has, is, uh, public safety for the kids that have to go to Pau'a Elementary School. They cross two sections of the storm drain that's taller than me. One bridge that they use, I believe was wiped out over a decade ago. The second bridge that still exists, they cross over a beam, a beam maybe four inches wide. Okay, I'm thinking these are under the city jurisdiction, but I'm not sure. And then the pathway that comes down from Deekalani Street onto Hawaii Limo, now that might be the HHL, the HHL's concern, I don't know. The kids face this every day. I know we might not be able to resolve this, but I, I just want to bring it to your attention. I know people in the community are willing to help in any way they can, you know, if, if it's got to be us, it's got to be us. I, I realize there's liabilities concerned, because it's public safety, so if you can find a way to help it, make it happen, I'd be very grateful, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gene, anything you want to say about that? It's fine. I, you know, we love the notion of the communities taking charge of their own community, whether it's a neighborhood watching, they're dealing with safety issues, or cleaning up a park, uh, you know, because government can't do everything. There are some challenges though, from the standpoint of volunteer activity, and especially, like, if you were to say, we could put a team of people together, as willing and as capable as they would be, and build a bridge, I don't think we could probably sanction something like that, but I hear what you're saying, and let's have Gene find out, and don't worry about the, the jurisdiction. I said at the outset tonight, this is a journey of learning for us, we try to keep it district by district, but it's good. Thank you. Who's up, next? There you go.
Hi, I'm Doris House.
Hello, Doris, good to see you again.
And, um, I just want to say thank you to all of you, because I, um, appreciate the cleanup on Canoa Street and all that was put into that, and Representative Tyler, uh, for being so active, and just what I saw for that, um, from that, it inspired me to be on the neighborhood board, so I've joined that, but I just want to, um, see if we can get some public education on the three-one-one Honolulu app, because I realize not a lot of people are using it. I walk my dog now twice a day, because I can on Canoa Street and around the area, and, um, when I see something, I stop and I take a picture, and I send it in, and I actually have apologized on it too, because I've seen human feces, so I take a picture, send it in, the next day it's gone, and I actually apologize to whoever has to clean it up, but the, and you can, if you look at that app and really, you know, go through it, it's really a wonderful tool. So I just wanted to thank you guys for all that you do for our beautiful city, our island here, and, um, I want to thank whoever came up with that app, and I appreciate it.
Go ahead, Steve, take credit card. Thank you, Doris.
I really thank you for that question, or rather, that comment, because I see HNL three-eleven as a, a very significant potential for this city, and really to bring the issues into the city as well, because I see how three-eleven is used in other cities, I look at what they do in New York City, in Los Angeles, and it's much bigger than really what we, the way we're using it, but I do see it as a real, very good tool, and I wish a whole lot more people do utilize it. And just as a background too...
Well, she's saying about a public education campaign, how do we get the word out, Stephen?
Well, I guess we'll, I guess the city has to do a much better job at educating the public about it, and maybe that is from more, uh, maybe TV commercial possible, something to really get the word out, and it, it has been around since about, actually, twenty-eleven, I believe, so it's been out there quite a while, so I, at this point, I do think it should be, um, really much more promoted than anything else.
Well, if we can have more people feel the way Doris feels, we ought to talk about how we do that. Oh, what? You're always full of good ideas. I, I remember the neighborhood board meeting saying, that Wahina is really smart.
So I had a police officer show me how to use it.
Okay.
And then he encouraged me to use it, and then, um, asked if I was using it the next time he saw me, so...
Right, okay, thank you, thank you, Doris.
That's a good idea, too.
That's a good idea, that's a good idea. Put it in the bus, Roger Morton. We should talk about, no, I'm serious, I, I promise you, we will follow up on a marketing plan for three-one-one.
I know I asked already, but, um, what's the process of three-eleven, because, uh, I did use it like multiple times, because there was a bunch of people that was screaming in one house, and they're still screaming, so what's the process of what's going on with that, and how do you control that?
I don't think that three-one-one is the call you make for that, I think it's nine-one-one.
I did that too, and they're still screaming.
Yeah, but nine-one-one would, would, would take care of that. Who's up? Anybody? Come on, somebody, come on up. I'm sorry, we only have the one microphone over here, it's okay.
My name's Kathy Dean, I live in Kaka'ako.
Kathy?
Yes.
Hi, Kathy.
You all repaved a lot of the streets in Kaka'ako, but you seem to have missed Waemano Street, Kuahe'ao Street, Queen Street, are they on a list to be redone sometime, anytime soon?
On the paving? I get on Waemano Street every day, I know what you're talking about. Who, Mike? By, by the way, for those of you who don't know, Mike Formby, here, this good-looking guy with the white hair, simply, just simply said he was the managing director. Mike is, I hate to say this all the time, he's like, if this is a football team, he's our starting quarterback, and he's also the coach, all the departments report to Mike as a managing director, so he's a really valuable asset on our team. Roger, go ahead.
So a lot of those streets were, uh, some of the disputed streets in Kaka'ako. But that's settled. That's settled now, that was actually, uh, the court case told the, or determined that the state of Hawaii had ownership of those, and on January, this, I think it was the seventeenth, the governor, uh, issued an executive order transferring those streets to the city. And what we are doing is we're collaborating with the State Department of Transportation to, uh, and, and they're, I think they're in agreement, but to help us allocate more federal funding to us from our normal annual, uh, 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 you know, appropriation, so that, uh, we can make improvements, I mean, real improvements to the street. Now meanwhile, uh, about three years ago or so, we did have a right of entry that allowed it, allows Gene Albano to, uh, maintain those streets, we, uh, we, we can pave them, we can fill potholes, we can do that, those things, but our, our vision really is, uh, that, uh, the streets need, uh, a lot of infrastructure work, drainage, other things like that, as well as simply paving them. So, that's a longer-term issue, but that's one that we're committed to, it's probably going to take us a decade to do the, the heavy work while Gene does the, uh, the fixing them up and, and do, just trying to keep them that way. I hope that answers your question, but we are, well, we, we, as I say, we, the governor transferred them to us three months ago, uh, and they don't come without a lot of cost in ma, in taking over streets, so we are, we are programmed fifty million over the next six years to fix the streets, and we're trying to negotiate that with, uh, the, the Ed Sniffin to help us, uh, by providing a combination of city, state, and federal funding to do it.
That's probably not the short-term answer you want, but one of the things that I found fascinating, becoming mayor, is how many private streets we have on Oahu, okay? That, that was an educa, I, all the years I've lived here, I never, that's what, but secondly, when the state gives us a street, they're not really doing us a favor, okay? Uh, and Mike and I have talked a lot about... and I have talked a lot about that. At first, I thought it was really cool. I said, Mike, excited like a little kid, they want to give us streets. And he just looked at me like, are you kidding me? You know, the cost of sidewalks, curbs, and sewers, we talk about infrastructure, just the sewer system alone, which is, and these streets don't have that. And so it's not like a simple thing. I mean, putting, fixing a pothole, even doing a top layer of, layer of asphalt, that's one thing. But that's not really, if you're going to have housing and everything else around, you've got to have all that infrastructure. It's really, and that's, we have too many streets like that. And not the least of which is the streets, the amount of streets that have to be fixed, um, as a result of trees that were planted with good intentions thirty, forty years ago, whether it was a lack of botanical knowledge or what, with these aggressive root systems that just eat up streets and break sidewalks, is in and of itself a monstrous ordeal. It's amazing. So we're trying to attack that as best we can. We have ten minutes left, or you're just giving me a double high-five? Ten minutes left. Okay, Scott, thanks. Come on, who else? Thank you. Anybody else on anything? Come on up. You're running for something, right?
I am.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Introduce yourself.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, executive branch. Thank you so much for all your hard work and really making Honolulu number one. Thank you so much. So, my name is Shirley Templow. I'm a part of the Kalih Palama Neighborhood Board, but I'm speaking on my own behalf. You know, all this talk with Chinatown and their revitalization with the art show and whatnot, and Kaka'ako and their parades, I want to be excited for Kalih. Can you just say something that will just uplift us? Because, go Kalih, go Gavs! Thank you.
I love, I, I love it. All right. So Michael, you want to come up? No, I'm not going to do that to you. Is anybody in this group? Laura Thielen. I, I might even think of a couple of these. I love, I love that. Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you. So we have, um, parks in the area. We have a lot of programs that we're running. Um, we've been making a big effort across the Park Department focusing on youth. And we are trying to change our summer fund, which is a great program already, into an even greater one. And one of the things we're focusing on is rather than just having activities for the kids, which they love, is to be working on what are the outcomes that these kids are going to be learning as they go through our programs. So we've been redesigning our summer fund and our youth activities around outcomes that are going to be teaching leadership, health and wellness, and sense of place. And we've been trying to, um, use the federal COVID relief money that we got in our department to be training all of our recreational staff so they can learn how to do backwards design, they can go back and revisit the fun activities, redesign them so that they will achieve these outcomes. We're bringing in our junior leaders, and we've revitalized our camping program out at Kualoa Regional Cultural Park, and so that we can use an intercession spring break program for those youth and help build their leadership skills, and they come back and serve as junior leaders in summer fund, and ultimately maybe go on into a career in the Parks Department. Our park administrator is sitting here tonight. I'm going to embarrass her, Christine Ching. She grew up through the Park Department. Um, she, she feels a, a real sense of pride and gratefulness and wants to bring that kind of opportunity to so many kids. And she's worked in that area, um, herself, and has a special place in her heart for it. We also want to thank our partners like PACT, because they've come on in and they're doing swim lessons for the kids in our pools, and so we can offer greater opportunities to the kids, not just the programs we run, but through the partnership and have those free, free programs and, and abilities for the children. And so we think just because we have, uh, facilities in so many places like Kalih, around the island, about sixty of our summer fund sites, I think over forty of them are in Title One communities. And so we've been using the FRF money to provide pre-enrichment programs, field trips, and other activities for the kids there so they don't have to pay for the buses. And we'd like to bring in partners so that we can continue that type of work, um, after the FRF money runs out. And so these have just been tremendous things, and we'd like to then, once we finish, you know, redesigning those youth programs, to turn around and do the same things for our Kapuna programs as well, because we'd like to provide that type of enrichment and outcome-based programs for people across the community.
How's that do? Huh?
I just want to say that Kalih is going to go through a lot of changes with the rail, um, you know, moving of O-triple-C and everything, so.
Well, KS alone, Community Schools, they have planned developments for Kalih. I, I spent a lot of my life working in Kalih between Hawaii News Now and then prior, before that KHL and Pool Holly Road. I spent years there. Um, so I've looked at a lot of the long-term planning, and honestly, if you, they, they, I, I looked at a presentation now. I know what year it is, twenty-twenty-four, but it's only twenty-one years away. A lot of you will be there. I'm probably not going to be on the planet twenty-one years from now. But tw, Kalih, that whole area, twenty-forty-five, doesn't even look like it looks today. So, and, and, but it's not high-rises like Steve said earlier with the Kaka'ako or the man that got up here. It's, it's really an incredibly planned community. Um, to take advantage of its location, first of all, imagine nothing there, but there are things there. They're gonna, it's going to be transformative. And, and so I think there's a lot of changes coming for the good. There don't have to be for the bad. But I do think, irrespective of what they said about the rail and the cynicism of it, that in itself is transformative. I would say this, and it's not about greedy landowners, because there'll be a lot of emphasis on affordable. Look, there's so much reality about what people earn here and what they can afford to pay for, and that's where we're at right now. And nobody's talked about outmigration tonight, but it's a topic we talk about all the time, and we can't build housing fast enough. I've got some people here that, that have, that represent an expertise that the city never had before, and the things that we're doing. Um, we can't do enough fast enough. That's the crazy part about it. But I do think, I loved everything that Laura said, but you're going to see a lot of good things happening in that area. I used to go up at the roof at Hawaii News Now sometimes, and just look at the proximity, you know? It's really very close to downtown. When you think about, and you look at Kalih and that whole area, that, it's inevitable that that area needs to be for the better on affordable housing and mixed-use resources and everything. That's going to happen in time.
Thank you, Mayor, for keeping Kalih in your heart. Appreciate that.
Well, get elected, get elected and do something about it. Help us.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, Jameson. Um, since the Park and Rec just talked, do you mind continuing about Kalih Valley District Park?
So I may call our Department of Design and Construction up to also give a little bit of information, but we are doing a fairly large project at Kalih Valley District Park. Uh, well, actually, two. One project, uh, was run through our department. It was an energy savings project. And what we did is we, um, we want to save money on water and on electrical, but we also wanted to pick energy savings improvements that would provide improvements in recreational facilities. And so we've put in energy savings improvements in that park, um, including in the pool with new pool pumps, um, a saltwater pool system, which is better for people swimming in it, better for the environment, and also less expensive to operate. Um, we're putting irrigation controls that are improved so that they're more weather-sensitive, so we don't waste water, and our partner with Florida Water Supply. Um, and then we've also had a community development block grant improvement that is going on and being run by the Department of Design and Construction, and Haku can talk about that a little bit more.
Thanks, Laura. Thank you for the question. Uh, yeah, so the CDBG project that we have going on right now is actually.
Oh, CDBG.
So, community development block grant. Uh, it's federal money. Uh, sorry, because of Laura, it just.
I know, I know, but we live in a world of acronyms.
Sorry.
I can promise you, okay?
So, yeah, so this is federal money that the city is able to take advantage of, uh, for specific areas, uh, of the island, or, um, or, or accessible, um, ADA kinds of improvements, uh, particularly at Kalih Valley District Park. Uh, we have one where we've, um, done a lot of accessible routes, uh, ADA improvements. Uh, that is, that one is wrapping up, um, should be done in the next, uh, month or so. Uh, we also have a gym roof improvement project, uh, that is currently in design. Uh, it'll take some time to get through that design, and we look to bid probably mid-late next year, uh, for that construction project. But we work very closely with Parks, uh, trying to do our best to, uh, give the community what they need. So, thank you.
Thank you, Haku. And I've been told we got to wrap it up. It's eight-thirty. I want to, I want to finish the evening the way I started, and that is thanking all of you for caring so much about where you live, to come out to a town hall meeting like tonight. We've tried to answer the questions to the best of our ability. I hope that you have found that worthwhile. We're not running out of here. All of us will be here for a little bit, a little more, if you want to come up and approach us. I just want to thank you again for being who you are. You, you inspire us. Thank you very much. Go bless.